The same as in subsection A of this section, except securely tied and/or sealed plastic bags of sufficient strength to not bear, tear, or break open may be used for trash disposal. So Section A is saying that in commercial areas, no trash shall be placed on any public sidewalk or within 10 feet of the curb that has not been placed in a receptacle with a tight-fitting lid and is leak-proof. So when I drive up and down the street on trash collection night and I see black bags that are sitting along the street and they're not in a receptacle with a tight-fitting lid or leak-proof, and they're not cardboard boxes that should be flattened and tied into bundles, then those people are out of compliance. So when we come over to Chapter 5.12, Solid Waste Collection, and we look at the definitions, we see bags, commercial. Commercial bags means plastic sacks designed for refuse which are used for collecting and transferring solid waste, have an identifying imprint designated by the city and are made available to customers by the city or sold by a designated agent, can be sealed or tied securely at the top, and have a capacity not to exceed 50 pounds. So that is authorized bags. And when we follow up and we look at 51204, F1, says the residential customers shall be required to contain their solid waste in bags embossed with a city logo, et cetera, et cetera. Number two, commercial customers will use bags, bundles, or private containers or commercial containers prior to collection. So when we look at this, we see that there is a discrepancy between what the residential customers are required to use and what the commercial customers are required to use. So the first recommendation of the Yellow Bag Committee, Research Committee, would be that the requirements for using authorized bags, tags, or containers should be equal across the board so that there's no discrimination against residential customers. The recommendation is that the same containers, bags, or tags authorized shall be across the board for everyone to use. So we don't come into a situation where we have trash placed in commercial areas that's not been placed in a receptacle with a tight-fitting lid and is leak-proof. So that would be one recommendation to consider. Another recommendation that was talked about quite a bit and very strongly recommended was that if we are going to continue to require the residents and possibly the commercial customers to use authorized bags so that there's no discrimination against the citizen, the residents, no discrimination against the commercial customers, everybody's on a level playing field, they would request and recommend that we research using recyclable bags, tags, or having regular containers that everybody can use that are able to be sealed. Because endlessly adding an extra layer of plastic bag to every bag that goes out of this town is adding and adding and adding more non-biodegradable trash to the landfills. And it would be a much better solution to have biodegradable bags, or simply tags that can be attached to whatever anybody uses, and then there won't have to be an extra layer of plastic encasing the trash that will never decompose. So those are the reasons of the Yellow Bag Research Committee.
Questions? Mr. Pennard?
Hello, this is an email of November 21, 2011, so this has been on the table a while. Do we have in the agreement that went into effect 17 October 2008, that's good for five years, says Solid Waste Advisory Committee, a five-member committee including the authorities, representative, the recycling department manager, the public work solid waste director, or representative thereof, we shall serve as chair, a residential customer, and a commercial customer. The residential customer and the commercial customer shall be nominated by the mayor and approved by the city council. The responsibilities of the committee shall include mediating complaints, conducting evaluations, and presenting recommendations to the city council. Do we currently have a residential and a commercial?
All we have is the board, Nescow County Solid Waste Board.
Well, this agreement says that we're supposed to have a committee that makes, in essence, this table's worked a little bit easier instead of having Yellow Bag Committees meet and meet and meet and meet. It looks like that if we had the residential customer and a commercial customer, the solid waste director, and recycling to mediate complaints, conduct these evaluations on what might need to be changed, particularly with the contract coming up for renewal, I want to say in less than a year, but sometimes around here it takes a little bit of time to get things through. So I would recommend that we maybe even consider following this contract as far as setting up the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And applaud this balance for her over a year at least efforts in trying to at least attack the problem and let the committee that's named by this table, or at least the two people that the mayor nominates, handle any of the issues that people have expressed concerns or lack of concerns for. That was a contract that was signed effective 17 October 2008 by the then-mayor and, I'm assuming, the director of the Carroll County Solid Waste Authority Director. And that's right in the definitions, paragraph Roman numeral I, not Roman numeral 1, paragraph little a. It's determined whether or not we're in or out of compliance, and if we are in or out and there's recommended changes, that they'd be brought back to the table for negotiating the new contract.
Mr. Pennard?
Yeah, so are you saying it's appropriate for us to ask for applications for people that want to be on this committee so it can be appointed by the city council?
The only two that would be, from the way I read this, the only two that would be nominated by the mayor and approved by the council would be the residential customer and the commercial customer. The chair and the other members are already set by contract. If you really want some interesting reading, you can read about tourist home and lodging contracts for trash.
And if you want some more interesting reading, you can read under Chapter 9, Basis and Methods of Payment, Sale of Materials. Commercial customers shall be required to use containers provided or approved by the authority or approved bags, tags, or containers provided by or purchased from the city or the city's designated agents. The authority shall be required to collect commercial waste only when contained in such bags or containers or designated by such tags. So it's kind of a, I mean, even our own code doesn't kind of agree with us. There's conflicts within our own code, and our code conflicts with the contract, and so we've found out it's pretty much just a mess, and there's not a level playing field, and the residents are being discriminated against. Is the belief of the committee.
I have an email from Mr. Jackson, not from Ms. Shaw, but Mr. Jackson. It says, "I'm not aware of any communication issues between the city and the Carroll County Solid Waste Authority that would result in black bag, commercial, either two-bag or seven-bag service not being enforced. The monthly charges on the customer's water bill, and if they have excess trash, it would be reflected on the spreadsheet that's factored to the city at the end of each month." So apparently they do approve the bags as containers for Carroll County solid waste, the black bags, since they pick them up. And they would have issue with it and would address us with it. It's not been done. Yes, sir.
Well, this is a sidelight to show how confusing this can be. When we moved from Holiday Island, I found out that we could either buy yellow bags and now have unlimited because it's included in our water sewer bill, or we could request a container from the city. And I went on unwittingly asked the question, I said, "If I pay for the container price, do I still have to put it in the container in yellow bags?" And I was told yes. So I would think that if this were a question that came up from a residential or commercial customer, that if we had this committee in place, this would be the tool to say, "Here's the committee, if City Hall gets a complaint, we'll forward the concern to the committee and let the committee hash it out" instead of spending 237 hours and 42 minutes at this table working on it.
Apparently the city of Berryville uses green, uses tags, Green Forest uses green bags, so everyone that works with Carroll County Solid Waste has an approved bag or tag. And they pick them up one way or the other. Yes, sir.
Get this off the dead center. I make a motion that the mayor pursue nominees of the residential and commercial customer to be approved by the city council in accordance with the current contract.
Second.
My line of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for your hard work.
You're welcome, sir.
Moves us on to, skip number five, it's been postponed, number six, voluntary tax, 0.6 mils for the cemetery. Motion to discuss.
The move.
Second.
Okay, I think we need to plan, there's two different issues really. There's a voluntary tax, and then there's a tax that you all are authorized up to five mils that you can approve at the table here. And currently, that tax is being levied at 4.4 mils in the city, and so you can take it up to five, and that, based on the valuation, the personal and real property within the city limits, and the latest figures I could get was 1-1-2012, is $58,857,724, and that times six tenths of a mil, which you would be allowed to do, would result in $35,315. Now, that has to be done by you before the October Quorum Court meeting because a resolution has to be sent from you to the Quorum Court to authorize the county tax collector to collect that money and then pay it to the city. So that's one issue. And if you're talking about, and that's not a voluntary tax, that's a tax that you all here as council members have the authority to raise, or any portion thereof, six tenths of a mil at this time. The voluntary tax, like Berryville collects, and their rate has been at six tenths of a mil, and they raised it to one mil this past year, that would have to go before a vote of the people to collect that voluntary tax, so I understand. And that's the way Berryville did theirs years ago whenever they first instituted that. But again, if you did six mils, it would raise, if there was a 100% participation, of course, there'd be $35,000 coming in from that. But I don't know what percentage of the people in the city of Berryville that are voters, or taxpayers, I should say, I don't know what percentage pay the tax.
Mr. Pennard?
Now, you're saying we have the authority, or do we have the authority to put it on the ballot?
Well, you have the authority to raise the current tax from 4.4 mils up to five mils. You have that authority, from what I understand from Mr. Shaw at Municipal League. On the other hand, if it went before the people, you would have to take whatever procedures, if you all can do that, bring it to a vote, to petition drive, or whatever, however it would be done, you could do that for whatever amount of mileage that you wanted to put in it. It wouldn't have to be limited to six, or one, or whatever. Berryville's at one time in the past was 1.75 mils.
That's for the volunteer tax.
That's for the volunteer. That's totally volunteer.
Right.
And, you know, it's on your tax statement at the bottom, and it's designated as voluntary tax for cemetery, or whatever it might be, and you choose, when you pay your taxes, to either pay it or not.
Does the volunteer tax have to be designated, can it be split up into not only the cemetery, but to another designee, designated, designee, I guess?
The total voluntary tax?
Yeah.
As far as I know, it could. That's for the legal question that I really don't, I don't see why it couldn't, but, or you could have two issues.
Right. Well, it probably would be two issues, yeah.
And on the-
To answer your question, I think in a lot of counties, or a lot of tax jurisdictions, this being a city, there are multiples. A lot of places have ones for their public library and also maybe a cemetery, or a fire department, if they have a voluntary fire department or something, to raise funds. So you could have various voluntary taxes.
Would the, like, the historical museum qualify?
Well, if it's a government entity, it's a non-
It's not a private city.
So it would not.
It'd have to be a government entity.
I think it has to be a government entity to collect a voluntary taxes.
So the library as a county entity qualifies?
Yes. And theirs would be based on their jurisdictions, countywide.
Okay. And of course, on the six mils that you could raise it up, or six tenths of a mil that you could raise it up to five, that could, you could do three mils for one thing and three mils for something else if you wanted to do that. You don't have to go all the way to the full six, or you could just do three mils if you wanted to.
And the six mils, roughly $35,000?
Yes.
If everybody participates.
This is not voluntary. This is, this would be added to every property owner that it says is real or personal property within the city limits of Eureka Springs.
I think it's just astounding that we are talking about raising people's taxes for something that should be getting money from the city, that did have a budget line at one time, we don't know why it was eliminated, but it was, and, you know, I think it's just insane for us to put more taxes on people. They don't want more taxes. And I don't see why this cannot be included in the city budget. I don't see why we can't do a budget line and find money within the budget. You know, a voluntary tax, you're talking about Berryville, their population is a lot bigger than Eureka Springs, so we have no idea if it's a voluntary tax, how much money it would bring in, and I don't think the cemetery, you know, they're having a very hard time operating right now, not knowing how much money they're going to have, and I can't even imagine a voluntary tax. So from year to year, they're wondering, "How much money are we going to get?" I mean, my guess would be the population of Berryville is at least three times the population of Eureka Springs. So when we're talking about $35,000, you know, or a specific amount of money, we're not going to know how much it is if it's a voluntary tax. And I don't think the people of this city should pay any more taxes at this point. I mean, we've got all kinds of expenditures going on, including, you know, the city of Eureka Springs being the only participants that are paying for a road to be widened, that we don't even have any idea what the cost is going to be. So I think we ought to just look into the budget, I think we should find a budget line for the cemetery, I think we should allot them a certain amount of money and have it set so they know what they're doing, because part of the problem right now is they're going like minute to minute, you know, shoestring to shoestring, because they don't know what money they're going to get. And as far as us passing another tax on the citizens of this town, I'm really not in favor of it. And I'm very much in favor of the city supporting the cemetery.
I have checked the records, but I believe that this table already voted to allow an operating expense item in the 2013 budget for consideration. That doesn't necessarily mean that this table will approve any or all of that item, but I think in doing that is the same as the Planning Commission with their budget request, at least is brought to the table as part of the budget consideration. And if I'm wrong, then I would make the motion to allow that line item in the budget, but I think we've already agreed to that for the 2013 budget.
Mr. Pennard?
Well, part of the reason I brought this up was so we wouldn't have to worry about future being in the budget, this would be a dedicated tax, dedicated amount of money that would go to the cemetery so they could depend on it rather than having to depend on the, what the budget, city budget was. I'm not sure which way's the best way to go, and being one of the lame ducks on this city council, I think, I would like to see the next council take this up and to look into it a little bit more. I'm not opposed to the volunteer tax, I think that's something, if we're truly supportive and the people in here, and I know I would be, would be willing to designate a portion of my tax money to go to the cemetery, just as I'm, you know, have options of doing some other things. So at this point in time, I think I'd just defer this until the first of the year.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Pennard? Does that override our previous approval of allowing a budget item in the 2013 budget for consideration?
I don't think so.
No.
This is strictly a volunteer issue. Okay, my line of favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
It's all on your lap, James.
Okay. Number seven's been postponed, number eight is Lakelacern Road paving impact fees.
Yes, sir.
Motion to discuss.
The move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Berry.
Well, I had to go back a little bit. I said impact fees, but I guess actually what it really amounted to is the waiver of fees for the sewer, the capacity sewer fee. When this came up in November of 2010, we did not make any decision. The superintendent, Wayne Carr, came before us and asked about waiving construction fees for the new high school project. And at that time, he was told that we wouldn't be able to waive the building permit fee, and there was an argument that we might be able to waive the sewer capacity fee because they were moving the existing building, existing use, to another facility. And therefore, they were just taking, I guess the argument was they were taking their toilets with them, which in reality isn't very feasible, obviously. And the, what would happen is if somebody, if and when the existing building, school is sold, then the new owner would end up paying that capacity fee, which doesn't seem quite right either. So I think in lieu of what we have discovered, and at that time during this whole discussion, we were also talking about the road, and we were told at that time that the school would be able to take care of it, and take care of the improvements, things like that. And it wasn't until just recently, when the city council got hit up with a bad-
(engine revving)
One of the questions we didn't discuss, and I don't think it's probably really practical, was we could donate that road to the school, although I don't know what would happen to the people who live farther on down Lakelacern. But as it is, what I would like to see is for us to go ahead and impose and determine what sewer capacity fee would be, and to have a building inspector estimate that fee and submit it to the school.
Isn't that capacity fee, isn't that a one-time charge?
Yes.
It's a one-time charge. So I can see what he's talking about moving his toilets. I mean, the same, people, instead of using it up here, they're going to be using it over there. It puts the same strain on the sewer system, so.
Until somebody-
So they've already paid it once.
Until somebody moves in. They never paid it, the existing school.
They never paid it at this school?
Correct.
Well, somewhere along the line, they need to pay it.
It seems that if there's a school here that's occupied, and there's a school over here that's being built, the intention may be to move the school and all the students and all their effluent over here, but if at some point the old property gets used for anything as it is, or if it gets used as it is, and we don't know that it won't be, this is impact, this is impact, this is already established, this is impact, that's new. So I kind of didn't understand how all that went down, because this is still impact.
It hadn't gone down.
Well, I mean, I mean, when the fees were waived earlier, it seemed to me they hadn't been waived, then I guess I'd just better listen. Thank you.
Let me reiterate, the council, this was in November, the council took no action and deferred it to the new council, be us, and we never took any action. This was November of 2010, the new council came in in 1-1-11. Now, that's just one of the things that kind of gets slipped through the cracks, it happens occasionally, I don't think it's any, you know, any fault of anybody, but the point is that the capacity fees had never been waived by ordinance or by resolution.
Mr. Pennard? I'm sure we could go back 50 years of things that haven't been done in this city, and my concern is, number one, in regards to the road, there was a quote by a then-setting council person who is going to be sitting against them on January, who stated, "Yes, the city did accept responsibility for the road, but they didn't have any money." Secondly, the same article, or a concurrent article, stated by the previous administration as, "You better count your potties because you may have to pay the difference." I concur that if, for example, the current school, in accordance with the sewer impact formulas, and it's not- formulas, and it's not all just toilets, it's, you know, somebody put in, decided in the design, they wanted to put in a hot tub in the gymnasium somewhere, the teacher's lounge, or whatever, that, part of, part of what Mr. Berry said oughta be, maybe taken into consideration is if, let's say, in the current school, they have fifty taxable facilities, whether they're toilets, or showers, or what are the cases might be. And in the new school, they have the same number. To me, that should be a wash, and then the people that come in, if they sell the building, then they would pay that, because they're putting the extra load back on the sewer system. But if, let's say, they've got two more than what they currently have, then to me, it would be proper for this table to listen to a recommendation by the school board, the school, whatever, whoever you wanna listen to, requesting consideration of those impact fees, which apparently are the only thing that can be waived, where we couldn't waive the building permits and, and all of those. And, and like you said, have, have the billing official, since he's been out there inspecting the project the whole time, compare the numbers of the old school and the new school, and see what the difference is, and see what the consideration is, because right now, the number's been thrown around as we're giving up sixty, seventy thousand dollars' worth of income, that I don't think is necessarily a true statement that needs to be cleared up and cleared up now.
Mr. Brown.
Okay, I guess I have two kind of questions. Number one, if those fees were never waived, then why were they never paid? And number two, back to, I'm trying, I'm trying to understand here, if there's someplace that's already existing, for instance, if we have a huge hotel that's already in existence, they've already paid their connection fees, whatever, however you call that, they, this hotel decides they're gonna build a new hotel over here, I would think that the impact fees or the connection fees should be paid for this new structure, regardless of the old structure, because one day, either this old structure's gonna be used, or it's going to be demolished, or whatever will happen to it, but this is new impact. This is new, this is already existing impact that has already been hopefully paid for. This is new impact. I think it seems crazy to me that, to think that you can build a new hotel and move into it for no impact fees or no connection fees, and then when somebody moves into the old hotel that was already there, they have to pay those impact fees and connection fees? That doesn't connect. I don't get it. So I would really appreciate it if somebody would help me under, understand that.
Would it not be true if the school by action ceases to have a water and sewer account at that location, whoever would assume the responsibility after that, whether it's by sale, or rental, or whatever, would then follow the normal connection fees for that facility?
Connection fees and impact fees are two different animals.
I understand that, but I answered the...
And impact fees are not normally imposed in most cities, and I don't know our specific code, but they're not normally imposed on prior construction. They're only imposed on new construction.
But I think the terminology needs to be clarified too, because we don't have impact fees. We have sewer capacity fees based on a chart in the code, because we were in the process two councils ago, I believe, in looking at implementing impact fees for the city of Eureka Springs, because I sit on that committee. I believe, and I don't know, as an architect, Mr. Berry may be more knowledgeable where it's easily found, but I think that's, you know, just like the school, not ever paying it, you know, there were, there were others that was determined four or five years ago that when the new, whatever operation, and I don't wanna name the names, because I don't care, because one hand thought the other hand was collecting the impact, or the capacity fees, and the other hand thought the other hand was collecting them, so therefore, we didn't get them. We never did go back and get them. And I think this is a point that actions taken several years ago should not be laid on this table or the upcoming table, because somebody failed to do it in the past, and precedent being set, that I don't think that there was ever any request to waive capacity fees. I know, because I sit here in this room, when they came forward in a line requesting all of the permit fees, maybe it was terminology, be waived, and they were greeted with a very blunt no, and that was the end of it. So I don't know what's been collected and what hasn't been collected.
Mr. Riffey.
But if you look at the chart of the capacity fees in there, it's like, schools are really strange. I mean, it's not really clear, you know, what you would charge, it doesn't seem like very much to me. It's, but it doesn't really clearly, municipal, regular school, it doesn't actually have a category for that. I think it may be a Catholic school or something they have in there, but a regular school, I couldn't, I couldn't calculate what the capacity fee would even be. I could sort of roughly compare to some other kinda school that was in there, but it's not really in there.
Mr. Berry.
I think the rough estimate was around twenty thousand dollars originally. And, you know, it is up to, to us in one respect, because we, we didn't take action on it a year, and we should have, for whatever reason. The building is still under construction, it's still being built. They're coming for us and asking us for, for monies to help them improve their roads and stuff, and we've accepted that responsibility. It's also should be noted too, that when that school, elementary school was built out there, they came before us again and asked for the waiver of the capacity fees, and at that time, the council said no. And they did pay, and a capacity fee at that point in time, and the same argument would exist, that there were people in that existing school, up here on top of the hill, and they just moved out there. But the council, at that time, and I don't know what year that would've been, ninety-nine, ninety-eight, decided to say no.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
But that was moving to a new facility.
This is a new facility.
I'm talking about, they continued operating the one that they moved out of, correct? Because they were all together before they built the middle school, elementary school?
They were all together, and they built the elementary school, and this elementary school moved out there, my understanding. That, that's where the elementary school is.
It's right there.
It seems like the intent of the capacity fee was for new buildings. It's like if somebody puts in a art gallery, and then somebody else buys it, you don't charge the new people, it's a one-time, on new.
New construction.
I'm not sure our code even addresses that properly. That might be the place to start with, looking over that and, and tweaking that. But it probably should be collected. That's a new structure out there, probably needs to be collected.
Mr. Wood.
I think absolutely it should be collected. I mean, you know, when, from what my understanding, the city of Eureka Springs donated the land for the initial high school, then we were told that they wanted to move the elementary school out there to get them away from the high school, so the city paid for sewer lines and water lines to be put in at the elementary school. Then they decided they don't want to keep the high school kids here, so now the high school kids are behind the elementary school. And I asked the principal about the kids, the high school kids walking up to the front of the elementary school to get on the buses, so that we wouldn't have to widen the road, and she said they might get rained on. Well, they could build a canopy or something for that. But from my understanding, this widening of the road thing, a good part of it is so that they can have sports tournaments. So that's a lot of why this road is being widened. And the city of Eureka Springs citizens, even though the school district voted this school into existence, although on the ballot, it doesn't say that that tax was gonna be used for a school, we just had a tax increase, the citizens of this town are getting hit twice. They're getting hit by the school district to pay for the school, and now only the citizens of Eureka Springs are getting hit for these other costs, for the cost of widening this road, which we have no idea how much it's gonna cost. It's now gone from twenty-seven thousand to, I think, thirty-seven thousand, which doesn't include guardrails or a lot of other things, quote, "for the safety of the children." And so I don't see why we shouldn't collect these fees from them, since the school district is not helping us pay for it. And a lot of people in Holiday Island and other places voted for this school to be built, and they're not contributing anything. And frankly, I'm really getting tired of the citizens of Eureka Springs contributing so much money, because other people outside the city have decided that the school is gonna move. I just don't think it's fair, and I'm having a lot of citizens tell me the same thing. It's not fair. If the people at Holiday Island wanted the school moved, then let Holiday Island contribute some money. I don't think we should be waiving fees for them, because the citizens here shouldn't be having to pay twice for this school, and that's what's happening to the citizens of this town. And I asked the principal how many students live in the city, and I got no answer. So, you know, the school district should be responsible for this stuff, or the county should be kicking in some money, but for us to be waiving fees and having the citizens here pay twice for all of this, I think is really, really unfair. And I have nothing against schools. Schools are great. I have nothing against kids, but, you know, let's face it, people are strapped for money right now, and I don't see why it should be the sole responsibility of Eureka Springs to pay all these extra things. If the school wasn't out there, the road would not have to be widened. And one of the major things they mentioned was buses coming in and out to the gymnasium for tournaments. And to me, that's not a cost that the citizens of this town should be paying for to have sports events. And if they're so worried about the safety of the kids, I say again, put seatbelts in the buses, because we, you know, we've got this estimate, we don't know where this job's gonna end up. We don't know how much the city's gonna have to pay for it. It's not solely Eureka Springs citizens' responsibility when the school board, I mean, when the school district votes a new school in. And this school that's been built is for two hundred students, so all of this is being done for two hundred students, and the citizens of Eureka Springs have, you know, they've had no recourse as to whether they wanna pay all these extra fees or not. So I say we shouldn't waive anything. We should collect the money so that we can recoup it for the citizens of this town.
Mr. Ford.
Again, it's, it's nothing against the school or anything else, it's just a matter of going on past precedents and of, but I'd like to make a motion that we instruct the building inspector to estimate the, the cost for the capacity sewer fee, and submit the fee to the school for, for collection.
I second that motion.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carried.
Right wing.
Okay. All right, that moves us to number nine, the Nellie Clark case. Motion to discuss. So moved.
Second.
Voice open.
I make a motion that we have the city attorney do the proper paperwork, or the appropriate paperwork to turn this over to the state Supreme Court.
Second.
At this point, you're represented by the municipal league, and the municipal league has, under my understanding, filed all that proper paperwork to appeal to the Supreme Court, or to appeal to the Court of Appeals, if the Supreme Court dictates that it is not a matter they will hear. It'll, it'll most likely end up with the Supreme Court. My understanding is that's, that's in the process, they're the ones that you have contracted with to represent the city. So we don't have to take any action.
I didn't understand that being the, the case when the attorney was here from the municipal league, unless I was, I thought it was our decision, one, to negotiate, two, to, one of, one of them being to support going ahead and going to the Supreme Court and dealing with what came out of that, or negotiating with her, or presenting a settlement figure, one of the, one of the three. And if, if that's the case, then, then we shouldn't even have this on the table, if that's the case. But that wasn't why he came up here.
He came up here, and I'm subject to him telling you different, but the way I understood it before he came in, what he told me he was here for, and what I believe he addressed to you, was that he, he has to make a decision whether to continue that action, or whether to short-circuit that action by entering into negotiations and creating a settlement if possible. There was a timeframe from when there was a ruling by Judge Bench, that he had to either initiate the appeal, or the appeal would be waived. And that timeframe, if I'm not mistaken, has ran, and at that point, he filed the paperwork to have it presented to the Court of Appeals. But that, that timeframe can be then stopped if you direct him to enter in, or some other party to enter into negotiations with Ms. Clark's attorneys.
Mr. Wood.
My question is, why in the world is the municipal league, since we paid for insurance for city vehicles, this took place with a city vehicle, why in the world is the municipal league appealing this, and why isn't the, why isn't the insurance that we paid for in negotiation and settlement this with Ms. Clark? Why is the municipal league taking this to court?
Because it has been the city's stated position, and it has been the stated position the municipal league has fostered in court, that this is not a city vehicle damage, this is a damage from a jetter, which is not a city vehicle.
Was the jetter on a city vehicle?
That is the question that they're asking a court to determine. And you are making a finding, if you, in your own mind, and I caution you from advocating that that is the city's position, because I don't think that is the position that the city is currently espousing in court.
Was the jetter on a city vehicle?
I haven't seen it, but I'm told it was.
And the city is deciding that, that the, the city, being whom, is deciding that, what, we're gonna declare tort immunity on this?
The city did declare tort immunity.
The council did?
The city answered the lawsuit.
The council or the mayor?
It's not the council's job to do that.
So the mayor declared tort immunity. The administration declared tort immunity?
I believe this council did, if you actually take an action toward that.
That wasn't on the council.
But the council debated whether or not at the time to settle her claim.
So by the council not settling her claim, which would've been the city paying the money, right, not the insurance that we pay for through the municipal league, then that threw it over into court?
You don't technically pay for an insurance in the terms you're saying, without getting into a long, drawn-out process. I don't know how to explain that to you.
I think the last input we had on it was Mr. Parker told us just to stop. As he was representing, he didn't know Ms. Ms. Clark was making the comments, and he came in, interceded, and said, that's it.
That's right.
And that's where it was left at. Yes?
Well, it's going to the Supreme Court to determine whether or not that qualifies under that vehicle statute that pays up to twenty-five thousand dollars. If we don't take that route, and we settle, it's gonna be out of our pocket as opposed to our insurance company. So I, I say let it run its course through the courts and achieve that determination.
So if we, that, that was my original question, that we go forward with the way that it's going, so lack of action is action?
That is my understanding. I mean, I'll call the municipal league's attorneys tomorrow and make sure that they are proceeding, but the last I heard from them, and the last he sat up here, was he was proceeding with the appeal.
If that's, if that's the result, I make a motion, if that is in case... If that's a result, I make a motion, if that is in case, excuse me, if that is in case true, I make a motion that we take this item off the agenda.
Second. Need for a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's on.
Five zero one.
Okay. Just real quick, my understanding is our insurance only covers us for collision impacts in the negligent acts.
That is what is being debated, is the definition of what is covered by vehicle.
Okay. That brings us into new business. Number one's supposed to be, number two has been withdrawn from the agenda. Brings us to number three, council deciding.
One more, that was drawn.
I think Mr. DeVito said he wanted number two taken off the agenda.
No.
Okay, postponed then.
No.
No. No. I didn't address item two on new business.
He wanted one postponed.
Only one, yes.
And I could have swore right in the middle of everything a while ago, you said take number two on the new business off.
Well, I'd like to, but.
I don't know where I get it at, okay. It's on then.
No to discuss.
Second.
If we're not prepared for this item, I'd move to postpone it to the next agenda.
It's nine oh five.
I'm not, I second right for you.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Who's going to, on the second?
James made it. Mr. Raphael, second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wasn't exactly sure where you wanted to go with it, so I don't know.
Postponed, thanks. Raises to number three, council deciding the number of subordinate police officers. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Board's open.
I'd just like to make a statement. I don't think there's anything that this table can do in thirty-five days that's appropriate, since we haven't been able to meet with the police chief. And state statute is currently being violated, and I would just request that the items still be considered, even if it carries forward to the new council, because it's served for a reason, and to say it's handled during the budget is a misnomer, because the budget drives the number, is what drives the budget, not the budget drives the number. And it may be even too late this year to, but it's going to be too late either way, because most of this is going to have to have a timeframe that you can't just automatic, unless you want to be really cruel-hearted about it, say, "Okay, we're going to go to three cops and one dispatcher and one canine dog," or something like that. I think it really needs to be addressed, so this table can realistically address budgetary requirements in the future, whether it be salaries, retirement, vehicles, increased maintenance, whatever the case might be, until such time, this table, based on the appropriate information, determine, as state law requires in the code, that we have someplace to start ground zero from. And until we have that, this administration, both administratively and executively, is going to continue to be in violation of State Code fourteen fifty-two, two oh one.
Mr. Ball.
As we know, state statute does mandate that we shall have a general ordinance declaring how many subordinate police officers can be hired. We've heard members of this table argue that that's done by budget, but we don't pass budgets by ordinance anymore, we pass budgets by resolution, so it's actually not being done in that way at all. And anyway, it says a general ordinance, and a general ordinance means like an ordinance that gets codified into our code book. Now, I do appreciate that the chief of police took the time to outline what his staff does, and why he needs the staff that he has to do what they need to do, and I do appreciate that. And it may be that at the time when the city comes into compliance with state statute, that they may decide, as I've said before, they may decide that he needs exactly as many as he has right now. They may decide he needs a few more. They may decide he needs a few less. But at any rate, state statute does require that there is a general ordinance that states how many subordinate police officers can be hired. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask you if you could kind of give me an idea why the mayor's office and the police department is so resistant to coming into compliance with state statute, when they are the law enforcers and they expect us to follow the law, and yet they're very resistant to following the law? Can you give me some idea why this is like this?
They can't set the ordinance, as we've done with council.
I'm saying, I've met from, it seems like this table has met from the mayor's office, from members of this table, from the police department, reasons why we shouldn't have this ordinance that the state statute says we shall have. So I'd like to have an idea of why the law enforcement arm of our government, and why the administration arm of our government is so, and part of the legislative arm of our government, why, I'd like to have some idea of why they're so resistant to following the laws, when indeed they are the ones who are supposed to enforce the laws. Can you give me some kind of an idea?
You can't enforce a law that's not been done, addressed by the council.
It's a law right here, why aren't we doing it?
It's not been addressed by the council yet, Mr. Ball. That has to be addressed by the council.
Thanks, that was a real good answer, sir. I agree with you.
Yes?
All due respect, the request, and I will take whatever heat, because it seemed like the minute it came out of my mouth, the underground gossip community was thinking we were looking at cutting the police budget, because that same next meeting, we had people commenting that, leave the police department alone. I think it would have been very inappropriate for this table, and we could have done it if we wanted to bend the non-communicative body that we've been accused of, and said, "Okay, Mr. City Attorney, write a city ordinance that calls for five police, two dispatchers, and one dog catcher." No, we made a motion, and it was approved at this table, to ask the police chief to come to this body and tell us, so we could make a rash decision of where to start in making this law you say isn't on the books, and it never will be if that attitude pervades both at the table, administratively and legislatively.
And he vetoed it.
It's got to be-
Yes, I did.
Yeah, he did.
A case of, and it was vetoed, that he would not be allowed to come before this body. So what's more disservice to the community? Us saying, "Okay, let's write an ordinance that's required by state law, that says, 'Let's have five cops, dispatchers, two part-time whatevers that can go write tickets to make more money, and a dog catcher.'" No, we said, "Please have your police chief come before us and justify the number of policemen that he needed, so we can be in accordance with state code, proceed to write an ordinance to be in accordance with state code." That was the intent.
Okay.
And we've met with nothing of resistance.
There was no intent.
Okay. So what's that got to do with the ordinance?
The ordinance, to be properly written, needs to have the input from the people that it's going to affect.
Right here, he gave it to you.
I have not seen one single ordinance on the number of policemen that we're proposing to have for this city.
Just because nobody can write it but the council.
Excuse me?
Nobody can write the ordinance but the council.
Council doesn't write ordinances.
City attorney writes the ordinance, and that is done based on the information that-